Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Kansas City Council's third, fourth, and fifth districts at large in the June 20th Kansas City municipal election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platt Counties, local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Social Justice Committees, the Council of Neighborhood Leaders, and the South Kansas City Alliance. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a trusted grassroots, nonpartisan organization whose membership does the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we neither endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, we are directly involved in sharing the important issues. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like for you to know the other league members volunteering. Elizabeth Dar is our timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by David Mockjoy. I lead the forum's administrative team. The public has sent in questions via the league's website, LWVKC.org. Tonight, we welcome guest moderator Eric Wesson, editor and publisher of the Kansas City Call. Welcome, Mr. Wesson. Unmute yourself and take her away.
Thanks so much for having me, the League of Women Voters and the AKA Sorority Incorporated. And to our candidates, good luck to all of you in this forum that we're having today. So I would like to start with Mr. Darwin Curls and let's just go from him around. My first question is, what will be your priorities if elected to the council? What's going to be the number one thing, the number two thing, and the number three thing that you will try to implement when, if elected?
Well, thank you, Mr. Wesson, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this forum this evening. And just for a point of clarification, my name is Daryl Curls.
What did I say?
Oh.
Sorry.
So just, just wanted to make sure that we have that going forward. My priorities are going to be three. Actually, I have five, but my number top priorities will be to enhance basic services. I believe that basic services is something that all citizens and all taxpayers are looking for city government to provide. And when I say basic services, I mean infrastructure, I mean street repave, I mean fixing potholes, I mean looking at illegal dumping, and I mean making sure that the city is living up to their expectations in regards to providing the best services possible for the city. Next is crime reduction. I'm looking at crime reduction because I believe that crime has been prevalent in our community. One out of four African Americans between the ages of 18 and 30 years old will be subject to a homicide. I have a 30-year-old son, and that is something that's very important to me. Lastly, is going to be economic growth and development because I believe that that helps stabilize as neighborhoods, create small businesses, expand small businesses, and creates a better working environment for Kansas Cityans. Thank you.
Mr. Ellington, what's going to be your priorities if you get reelected to a second term?
Well, that, that's actually easy. Increasing economic mobility in the third district, fourth district, sixth district, fifth district, to pinpoint those areas when it comes to economic mobility. Increase the understanding and utilization of the officer's engagement, which goes to crime prevention programs, workforce development programs. It can touch on development and also increasing full-time employees at the city, which reduces contract services and increases the productivity of our departments.
A follow-up for you. What is economic mobility?
I'm actually glad you asked me that. So economic mobility is something that we see implemented in Boston, something that we see implemented in New York, something that we see implemented in Denver, and something that we see implemented in San Francisco. So when we look at our economic base and our economic taxes and center of programs, we see a lack of job creation, job programs. We see a lack, a lack of violence reduction programs that actually have metrics. We see a lack of housing options. So the housing options would touch on San Francisco. The education and access would touch on Denver. The other one would touch on Boston. And all of those touch on officer's system engagement because officer's engagement opens up DOJ funding.
Mr. Kelly, how are you this evening? What's going to be your priority?
Doing well, Mr. Wesson. Thank you for inviting me and thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. So in terms of my issues, priorities, I'm really going to be focusing on three key areas. Number one is infrastructure. Number two is neighborhoods. And number three is sustainability. With regards to infrastructure, what I want to do is build upon our efforts to create a more safe and accessible Kansas City. We need to do more to specifically support people who are not only aging in place, but also people who are dealing with long-term health conditions as a result of about, about with COVID-19. Those are elements related to infrastructure that I want to address. With regards to neighborhoods, I want to specifically focus on not only improving quality of life, but also addressing issues related to affordable housing and houselessness. So that would include working to expand bulky item pickup, working to redefine what affordable means in Kansas City, and also giving more resources to our homeless prevention coordinator, Josh Hingas. Finally, with regards to sustainability, climate change is a real issue and it is something that Kansas City has recognized and is taking steps to address. We have developed the city's climate protection and resiliency plan, which will guide our efforts to become carbon neutral by the year 2040, and I will lead efforts to rapidly implement those elements. So infrastructure, neighborhoods, and sustainability are the issues that you can expect Councilman Michael Kelly to address when he is elected.
Go back and explain to me again about the, or explain to us, the infrastructure definition that you gave.
So when I'm talking about infrastructure, it is not just about building our roads, but also building our sidewalks and specifically asking the question, who are we building all of this for? We need to be thinking more about how we can make this more accessible for people who live in wheelchairs, for parents with small children, for our aging neighbors. And so those are elements that I will work to mold into stronger policies than what we currently have in Kansas City.
Mr. Short, what can we look for you for priorities for if elected?
Well, good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters, AKA, and, and others for having us here tonight. I apologize, I am very under the weather, so my voice is coming and going, but we're here and I had some Dayquil and we're all right. I, I think I'm going to hyper-focus on the first one, and that is to bring back fourth district meetings. We haven't had a meeting in the fourth district since July of 2021, and I think that that is something that is a real shame and we need to, it is our job to educate the public on policies and the workings of City Hall and what's happening at City Hall, and I think that is, that is extremely important. So that's going to be the very first thing we're going to focus on is re-engaging the public with the municipal process. We've got a lot of work to do in that space, but I'm committed to doing it. Economic development, being in the fourth district and being fourth district at large, we need to make sure that we are investing and reinvesting in areas that have seen historic de-investment and continuing to grow a vibrant and quite frankly, successful urban core. And how we do that by reducing crime and cleaning up our streets in terms of trash and litter and bulky item pickup and addressing illegal dumping, things that are being addressed now, but making sure that with the council turnover, those things don't fall under the wayside. But that goes to the second priority, which is transportation. What if we're, it doesn't matter what we're building or where we're building it, if we can't get people to and from it. And it's not just cars, it's, it's also buses, it's bikes, it's scooters, it's multi-motor infrastructure that we can get people not only to jobs, but to housing as well. We've got some exciting transportation initiatives in our city.
All right. You got stops.
Oh, I didn't realize, I didn't see the timer. I'm sorry.
All right. We're gonna let you go this time, but next time it's going to be two demerits.
Sorry, sorry. I, I'm not sure where the timer is, but I don't think it's up anymore.
Okay. I'll let everybody know when the stoplight comes on. Ms. Hasley, how are you?
How are you?
What can we look for when you're elected?
Um, one of the things that I want to focus on, in the third district, we have hundreds and hundreds of vacant lots, to the point where it looked like, you know, a war happened. And so I'd like to spend some time, you know, methodically preparing vacant lots for redevelopment. Unfortunately, in the state of Missouri, we don't have a strict enough policy of how demolitions are done. And so while a lot looks great on top because it's green, there's actually a lot in the ground. You know, it could be water heaters, clothing, trash, parts of the foundation. We could spend anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 just preparing the lot to put either single-family or multifamily housing back. So that's something that I want to focus on. It'll have a number of collateral benefits such as increasing our tax base. I think the third district is the only district that lost population during the last census. And so it'll be important to put rooftops back into the district. Also, it impacts schools. When you don't have enough schoolchildren, you can't afford to provide calculus, Algebra II, band, organized sports. And also it'll increase public safety because there'll be more people around to watch out for your neighbors, and these vacant lots do attract bad behavior. So one of the things that I want to focus on because it has multiple benefits is addressing vacant lots.
All right. Thank you. Chris Benray, if and when elected, what can we look for your first priority to be?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Benray, running for City Council, fourth district at large. I am very optimistic about our future as a city. We have some incredible opportunities on the horizon. However, I am very concerned about the serious challenges we have that could derail us from those opportunities. One of those things which I hear a lot about from folks is I knock on doors and go to meetings and speak with people about what's important to them is our public safety crisis. And I cannot emphasize that word crisis enough. I mean, just this last week, and my goodness, we had back-to-back-to-back homicides. We are second deadliest year in Kansas City history. Last year, we had our most deadly year in Kansas City history in 2020. However, we are outpacing the rate at which homicides occur in 2020, and we're, we're barely here to the summertime. This is a huge, huge issue, an incredible crisis that we must address. This is violence that disproportionately impacts communities of color, but impacts as a city as a whole. And so my focus is going to be on crime prevention, violence reduction, and making sure our city is safe. In addition to that, I'm going to focus on making sure our city is clean and that we have smooth streets and smooth sidewalks and that we're focusing on the basics, the basic city services, you know, these things are the bread and butter of local government. These are the things that Kansas Cityans expect their government to do. And then the third category is a catch-all for me that I'm calling an opportunity, the chance at greater success in housing and meaningful employment and transportation opportunities and education.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ellington, this is a tailor-made question for you, I'm sure. There are two major proposed development projects, a downtown baseball stadium and a roof over 674 Park. That purported to be supported by private funds, but they would only benefit a limited number of Kansas Cityans. As a council member, what would be your approach to these projects, given that they are undoubtedly will require tax money now or in the future?
Well, just, just for S and G, just for F and G, it's already has taxpayer money in it. The state of Missouri has already put money in there, and I find the conversation extremely disingenuous from the city standpoint when we talk about, we don't know, we don't know what's happening when we're partnering with the state to ensure it has transportation funding dollars already allocated to it. I think it should not be a priority.
Which project though?
Oh, I'm sorry. The South Loop, the Overlook. Yeah, that's the one that already had some state dollars allocated to it. I believe our priorities should be increasing our parks if we're going to focus on parks and making sure that our parks are actually viable for not only community to have activities there, but they're beautiful. Currently, I don't support either one of the renderings as it is. I haven't seen any state that a downtown stadium or a baseball stadium or a basketball stadium has brought economic density or economic destiny for that city. In the state of Missouri, we're still paying for the St. Louis Rams, and I think the citizens of Kansas City should expect more from our local elected leaders and also our sports teams. If they was concerned about improving areas and economic density where they're currently located is the perfect facility because all the highways connect and you also have two municipalities that have a bike. So I currently do not support the downtown stadium, nor do I support the South Loop because I think our priorities should be ensuring that citizens have access and we're not just bending over for developers.
All right. Okay. Mr. Curls, what are your thoughts about the stadium? A downtown baseball stadium and a roof over 674 Park?
Well, the baseball stadium, I have several questions in regards to that. And I just want to wait and kind of see. I'm not opposed and I'm not in favor of it at this particular time. I'd like to see, number one, how much taxpayers' money is going to actually be asked of taxpayers? Number two, I'd like to final, finally see what the location is going to be. I want to also know what or who they're going to displace, whether it's businesses or whether it's residents. And then what's going to happen to those businesses and those residents? We don't want to, I don't want to put anybody out of business and I sure don't want to create any more homelessness. I want to see what the egress and regress is going to be. I want to know what's going to happen to the old stadium. So I've got several questions in regards to the baseball stadium. The 670 Loop, I know that there's been some money mentioned and put into that project as well. But I'd also like to see what other type of subsidies that they might be looking for. Are they coming to the city, asking for them for some money? Tax city taxpayers? I haven't heard of that yet, but usually with any development, they usually want to depend on taxpayers of Kansas City to throw in something. So I want to kind of see what all of that entails before I make a decision on either one of them.
Mr. Ray, your thoughts? Baseball stadium downtown and a roof over 674 Park?
Yeah, in regard to the baseball stadium, you know, I'm excited about the opportunity and potential if we do it right. Beyond that, it's difficult to have an educated opinion without knowing where the stadium is going to be located, what the timeline is going to be, what the financial package is going to look like, what the specific ask of the city is going to be. I can guess what it is going to be and speculate, but you know, those are the types of things that will drive my opinion. I'm eager to have that information and I'm hopeful that, you know, the Royals as an organization are going to be sharing those details soon because what I don't like where the conversation is going is, you know, pitting municipality against municipality. And now we hear is, you know, North Kansas City is potentially a location. And so, you know, I want to, I want to hear what that information is. I think a key part of your question, when you originally asked it, was who's it going to benefit? And, and the folks in assumption that it's going to only benefit certain communities. But I think that's something we can decide, you know, we can decide what kind of jobs are going to be provided during the construction of this thing? What kind of jobs are going to be provided after it's up and running? Where the location is going to be and what kind of economic development is going to surround it? And how we be proactive about the economic development? You know, these are things that we can play a role in. And you can, you know, believe me when I say I will focus on making sure this is a benefit to all Kansas Cityans.
Let me do a follow-up with you. Why do we need it? Of all the priorities in Kansas City, why do we need a park over 670?
Oh, you're asking about the 670 Park? Yeah, you know, I don't know that it's necessarily an option between Park over 670 and, and, you know, other resources that we might allocate elsewhere. You know, they've raised a substantial amount of private dollars to go into this thing. And again, similar to my last answer is I don't know what the ask of the city is going to be. So at this point, I, I'm not making an assumption that we're choosing this over other priorities. Again, I think the key with this is to make sure it's easily accessible by everyone in Kansas City and that everyone has a right to be there.
Ms. Hasley, your thoughts? Baseball stadium, park, a roof over 674 Park?
Yeah, so immediate concerns about both. First of all, with the stadium, according to my research, it's going to have an immediate impact on the housing market and we already have a housing crisis, and so I'm very concerned about that. And so I'd want to see some pretty significant invested investment in housing as a part of any conversation in terms of building a stadium, especially if it's in East Village, which is very close to Third District. In terms of the cap on 674 Park, I agree that there is substantial private dollars that have been raised, but my concern is the impact of that park on the existing park's budget. Obviously, it will need to be maintained long-term. I'd like to know what that looks like. As you know, Kansas City is one of the largest, has one of the largest, if not the second-largest park system in the United States. And so we have a lot of parks that we already need to maintain and we know several of them are not where they need to be. So I'd be concerned about what constraints on the park's budget a new park will impose. So that's what I'm going to be paying attention to on both of those projects.
Mr. Kelly, do we need a downtown baseball stadium? Do we need a roof over 674 Park?
So my stance with regards to the baseball stadium is I am currently opposed to it. And it's for three reasons because there's been a lack of community engagement. We don't know the full value of the project itself and because we don't know how it aligns with our broader goals as a city. So with regards to the community engagement, there were three hastily scheduled meetings that had no Zoom virtual options, that had no childcare access and that had no accessibility for people who are deaf or hard of hearing. With regards to the value of it, we have said no in the past to important projects. And because we say as a city, we can't afford it, this project should be able to stand up to similar muster. And then the final part of it is we do not know enough about how this potential project is going to align with our broader goals. There has been some clarification on unions, but there are still questions around things like transportation, like sustainability that still need to be addressed. With regards to the cap over I-670, I'm a little bit more open to that only because I believe that there's been much better clarification about how it could potentially support things like infrastructure needs as well as sustainability, helping to create not only a bridge between both downtown and crossroads, but also in terms of creating new green space where there previously been none. I'm a little bit more encouraged by that, but there are still serious questions that need to be answered.
Going to follow up with you with one thing. You said broader goals. What do you mean?
In terms of the stadium or in terms of the park?
Park.
So with regards to broader goals, it is, it is, what I mean by that is how does it specifically support things like accessibility? Is it something that is wheelchair accessible? In terms of broader goals, how does it align with our sustainability? Is it creating new green spaces? Is it encouraging cleaner forms of transportation? And so that's what has been explained and explored up to this point in a way that has not been explained and explored up to the same point with the downtown stadium.
Mr. Short, your thoughts? Baseball stadium and roof over 674 Park?
So I'm going to actually kind of agree here with candidate Kelly. I believe that the downtown park has reconnecting community of benefits to it. You know, that we have gotten $15 million from the state to raise $50 million in tax credits as well as $10 million from H&R Block and Cordish and Lowe's have also put in private money today of an unannounced amount, but we'll find out that amount soon. But today, there was an article about the city putting $10 million from an unappropriated fund to match a grant for $28.6 million in additional funding for the park. And that's concerning for me because I, the park is a wonderful idea and capping 670 and reconnecting and having a green space downtown, that is a good idea. But let's be very, very honest about who it is benefiting. It is benefiting the residents of one light, two light, and three light, which is fine, but I feel like those private companies should put in a little bit more dollars to make that happen. And the Lowe's certainly, because having the highway covered is obviously an advantageous thing for convention center hotels. So that's my concern, particularly with that information that came out today. I, I want to, I, we really need to dive deeper into that. As far as the Royals downtown, I'm supportive of that plan, but what I would want to see, I do want to make sure that it is union-built. We need to be investing in the people that would be building that facility. Also, I would like to see a community benefits agreement that makes sure that we are building housing at 30% AMI on near or around the site and also the potential for a Chapter 353 plan, which is a tax, a land tax abatement in a radius around the facility so that the concerns about rising property values can be mitigated.
Stoplight is on. Okay. So this is a follow-up question because several of you have said this about private dollars being invested in something. And I'm kind of getting the impression that as long as there's some private money invested in it, then it's okay, because our money ain't good money. So just because you got private dollars invested in it, does that mean that it's a doable project? Or do we have to peel back the layers of project to see exactly what taxpayers are going to get for these projects? So I'm, that's just a, a quick question that you can answer real quick. So let's start with Mr. Kelly.
So if I'm understanding the question, it's basically is, is private dollars enough to say, yes, we should throw in public dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So no, we, you know, private dollars being offered in for a project is always encouraging, but we have to be thinking about the broader impacts of this in terms of the long-term tax implications as well as, you know, what is it going to do to the community where the project is being built? So with regards to long-term tax implications, you know, when we give dollars, that means that we are saying that you can have this, that you can have this benefit that we are not going to have as a city. Those are funds that we are not going to get back for a certain period of time. That means that things like our schools, like our services, like libraries are going to potentially miss out on that. And so that is something that we have to be willing to scrutinize and we should be working to bring those entities into the conversation earlier rather than what we've done in the past where we kind of bring them in at the last minute as kind of a check-the-box sort of thing. But the other thing is how does it impact the community where it's being built? And I think that this has been kind of alluded to by other candidates up to this point, but just saying that we're going to build something is not enough. If we're not thinking realistically about how are we going to get people there who don't have access to a car, how are we going to create opportunities for people who need those jobs? How are we going to ensure that people are able to remain whole? Then private dollars are great, but they are not enough to make Kansas City better when it comes to those sorts of developments.
Mr. Curls, your question?
I would say that, you know, private dollars is not going to be the end-all, the beat-all for me. Like I said, I have several questions. I, I want to make sure that whatever happens, the community benefits some kind of way. So therefore, I would be in favor of a community benefits agreement as well. And I'd also want to look at, you know, especially how does it affect minorities? Because it's, it's centered or close to the minority areas around 12th and 12th and 18th and down in the areas where minorities are. So I want to make sure that, number one, there's jobs for minorities. How is that going to impact their communities that they live in? I mean, you have to look at several different things, I think, not just private dollars that are being invested as, to, to say that, okay, that's all that's going to matter. No, not, not in my opinion.
Ms. Hasley, oh, are you done?
I was just, I was just going to say. I was just, I was just gonna say, I hope that answered your question.
Okay.
Okay.
Hasley.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned in terms of the six seventy cap, like I said, how it impacts the existing, you know, parks budget. And if, and if that's something that's sustainable um, over time and does not drain uh, resources away from parks that are already in, in quite disrepair. Um, so I don't think just because it's uh, pub- uh, privately funded at the moment, that that means that it won't be publicly funded in the future. And so uh, we need to be real clear about that. Um, so yeah, I think there's a lot of things that um, from a financial standpoint, that really need to be vetted um, to the best of our ability because you can't forecast everything. Uh, but that would be my approach.
Mr. Allington.
I'm gonna be real quick on this because I'm gonna go over on, on at least one question. My voter record already shows that I'm gonna vote no. Uh, private money does not persuade me. It's the makeup of the financial impact and also the CBAs, which have pretty much been non-existent since I've been on the council.
Mr. Short.
Um, I think that private money, uh, private money investment is not enough to use public dollars. I think we've identified how important a CBA is a community benefit agreement. Um, but we, this is why we have incentives, right? To, to incentivize things that we want. Um, and if we are able to qual- quantify what those benefits are, I'd be willing to have the public public dollar conversation. If the project is five privately funded like the downtown uh, cap, that's fine, but uh, like Dr. Hasley, I'm concerned about the further drain to the municipal budget and what budget line item is. Now Port Casey has signaled that they will be taking care of the park, which that's great. Um, but again, where does that come from? If they're not able to do it, um, is there an opportunity for the downtown CID and the crossroad CID to work together to fund maintenance? Uh, but those are questions that need to be answered uh, before we dump ten million dollars from the unappropriated fund into this project.
Mr. Wright.
I think private funding is important. Uh, I think it's important for folks to put some skin in the game, but I think that's only important to the extent uh, to which it helps us address what is often a hurdle when planning, and that is who's paying for what and where is it coming from? It certainly does not relieve us of our duty and obligation as city council members to be good stewards of city services uh, to uh, uh, demand and maintain transparency around the development of the project, accessibility to the final product um, and inclusiveness moving forward. Um, those are things that we have to remain vigilant on as well as what the details of a CBA are gonna be. Are these gonna be good, union paying jobs with prevailing wage? Uh, are they gonna benefit the folks who most need to be benefited? And so I, I think it's helpful to the extent that it allows us to address some of the uh, questions and barriers around how you finance doing something, but uh, it certainly does not relieve us of that obligation to make sure uh, what is happening in Kansas City meets our standards and values.
I'm gonna stay with you for the next question. Do you think it's possible to end homelessness in Kansas City? And if you do, what would be your first steps toward making homelessness a thing of the past in Kansas City?
I think it should be our goal, whether or not it's possible. Um, you know, I, I look at Houston as an example, uh, where I believe they took a housing-first approach and reduced chronic homelessness, chronic homelessness being folks who are living on the street, who are living under bridges, not necessarily the folks who are, you know, couch surfing or, or bouncing from family member to family member, but chronically homeless folks by about fifty percent. Um, those are some good numbers. That is some incredible progress on getting folks connected to uh, housing. The city's current plan uh, does somewhat adopt a housing-first approach and uh, I, I think the important piece of this moving forward is making sure this plan does not go in the direction of many prior city planning efforts where we do all this great organizing and planning and research, and then we let it sit on the shelf collecting dust and we don't fund it, we don't staff it. And so that's gonna be my focus uh, on the councils, making sure we are actually supporting what is in the plan so that we can make a huge uh, uh, level of progress. I will say um, one area that I think I would like to expand the focus is on uh, connecting families in the school district who are experiencing homelessness. When I served on the school board from two thousand ten to fourteen, we had about twelve hundred kids and families that were experiencing homelessness. Most of them not chronically homeless, but I wanna connect those families uh, as well to housing opportunities.
All right, Ms. Hasley. Can you end homelessness? What would be your first steps toward addressing homelessness?
No, I mean, it's like world peace. We all want it. We work toward it. Um, is this something that's ac- actually achievable? You know, probably not in our lifetime. There's um, kind of two segments of the uh, homeless population at least. You know, uh, one segment that is, has been homeless for quite some time for a number of reasons. Um, that's a harder uh, population and it requires different types of strategies to move them toward um, move them out of, out of homelessness. Um, and then there's um, a, a segment of the population that's, that could become homeless. So a person, you know, that recently lost a job or and has kids and and so they're probably couch surfing, but they're, they might be on their way to homelessness. And so those two populations have ver- very different needs. Um, I am, you know, encouraged that there are um, um, some sources of income to mitigate homelessness. I know that the Housing Trust Fund, for example, has, I think, a twenty percent set aside for transitional housing. Um, and there was recently a, a tax on marijuana levy, part of it will um, be used for homeless uh, mitigation. And so um, I think we need to be diligent in, in how we address the issue and, and uh, decrease it. But I don't think it goes away um, to zero percent. Uh, I don't think that's necessarily possible.
Let me, uh, let me ask you a follow up question because you ma- you made an interesting point. So there's some supposedly some money that's gonna be set aside for homelessness uh, from the marijuana money, tax money. What do you, what do you do to make sure that money goes where it's supposed to go?
I think that's being uh, you know, kinda like a, a leprechaun uh, in trying to convince people to uh, hold true to what they promised they would do with the funding source. Um, I liken it to mission creep. You know, we've got so many problems, so few resources. Some people may want to uh, kinda change uh, what we said we would do with that fund. And I think it's incumbent upon uh, people that are elected to make certain that those funds go toward what we promised they would go toward.
Mr. Short. Are you there?
I am here. I apologize. I, um, I, I believe that it is possible and, and maybe I'm a little overly optimistic, but I believe that the ninety-six page document we put out, it's called Zero KC uh, with Josh Hinges and the Missouri Coalition to end homelessness, um, says that it's possible and, and I, I tend to believe that. Uh, we passed this plan and I, I do have concerns that the plan would sit on a shelf. Um, but we've seen some movement in funding the plan because the fund is, the plan is useless without funding. Um, like Dr. Hasley identified, a third of the marijuana sales tax is going to this program, but we also accepted a four point eight million dollar grant from the feds uh, for non-congregate housing, which is what this model is. It's a housing-first model. Non-congregate housing is like Veterans Community Project where, where it's tiny homes and not shelter-based. Um, and it's easier to access those folks into transition, excuse me, into jobs, uh, job placement. Um, but also I think one of the big things that we, we're not talking about is mental health access. And the governor of Missouri is about to sign a three hundred million dollar allocation for behavioral health, behavioral health facility on Hospital Hill. Um, and I think that this will increase access and availability to our abysmal uh, mental health access services in this city. I also think that building affordable housing at thirty percent AMI is relevant here. Getting people off the streets isn't good enough if we don't have a place for them to live. Um, so I think that these, I think that those things are very important and I do think it is possible, particularly with Josh Hinges at the helm.
Mr. Allington, is it possible to end homelessness?
I think homelessness is a big dollar issue. And I say that to go to the lack of empathy, concern and serious plans. I think we could put a serious dent in homelessness if we actually address the underlying causes for why people are homeless. And I think the best way we can do that is to go into partnership with nonprofits and actually increase our service providers, give you an example. The office of system engagement opens up DLJ funded. So we talk about vulnerable communities that have uh, ballooning of homeless populations. We're talking about drug addicts. We're talking about people that need to have social issues, uh, mental issues. Some people have medical issues. Then we have some uh, people that are systemically homeless. And most of these congregate in low income, underinvested in areas. And I said that because we have to be serious about the causes of homelessness. And also those services that would allow people to either work themselves out or ability to cipher through. And where would the city buy in coming in? Uh, one of the ordinances I did not uh, follow through and finish on was the homeless enclave and we were taking uh, city property, building permanent facilities on there and partnering with the medical facilities. That would only address one issue though. That would address the mental and the uh, immediate house. The other services would be provided by service providers. And again, we passed that infrastructure, which is office assistance engagement. So to wrap it all up, we can actually end homelessness if we have communities that are vulnerable, that have self-determination, actually have the cash to actually invest in those communities. When I say homelessness is big dollars, uh, since I've been on the council, we've seen all times.
Uh, okay, yeah. But let me ask you a follow up question. You s- you, you mentioned underlying issues that cause homelessness. What are some of those underlying issues?
I mean, we have a barometer on, uh, some of them are youth that run away from domestic violence situations. Uh, whether that's the mother getting beat on or the mother on drugs or the father on drugs and what have you. Then you have the mental issues where some people have mental uh, uh, dispositions. We have veterans issues and I give you a hard concrete when I say dollars associated. There's a uh, Veterans Foundation that I work hand and uh, nail with that actually houses folks. Uh, is able to deal with black veterans, et cetera. And I know there's a void of veterans opportunities, whether they're black veterans or not, depending on the receiver agency. So again,
Right. You gotta.
Who we partner with.
Stoplight is up and you know, you kinda fading in and out too.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, you fading in and out. Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Curl. Can we end homelessness?
Uh, I don't.
Steps toward ending that.
I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, I don't think that you'll ever end homelessness. Uh, I'd like to hope and, and believe that you would, but I don't, I just don't think that you'll ever end it totally. Uh, can you put a dent in it? Can you knock it down? Can you help uh, uh, alleviate some of it? Yes. Uh, I've had the option, opportunity to speak with some homeless people and some of them uh, really prefer to be homeless. Uh, so those individuals that uh, prefer to be homeless, I don't think you'll ever be able to get them into a home. And they have various reasons that I won't go into or, or expound right now. But I think that number one, you have to try to do some things in order to uh, prevent homelessness and that is by stopping evictions, you know? Uh, uh, a lot of people become homeless because they are, have been evicted, uh, because they can't pay the rent or they uh, have medical bills that are astronomical or something like that. So I think you really have to kinda look at uh, ways of preventing homelessness. It also has to be a regional effort, I believe. Uh, the city can't uh, address it and do it by itself. You have to include the county, you have to include uh, the state of, of Kansas. You have to include all stakeholders in regards to trying to alleviate homelessness. And then you have to have those wraparound services that are gonna be there uh, for them, such as uh, medical attention, uh, addressing the mental illness aspect of it and some of the other things that uh, affect homelessness.
Mr. Kelly, can we eliminate homelessness? And what would be your priority?
So we can't eliminate homeless homelessness. The focus would be on kind of reaching functional zero, which federal government says is if someone becomes unhoused, they are able to get into housing as soon as possible, typically within about thirty days. With regards to how we begin to address that, there's really kind of three areas, staffing, the housing first expansion that's been talked about by others and prevention investments in key populations. So with regards to staffing, um, I think candidate short has mentioned Josh Hinges. Um, the, the problem is that Josh Hinges is the only housing prevention coordinator we have for the entire city. And that's not enough. We should realistically be trying to ramp that up to a point, I believe, of at least having um, two homeless prevention coordinators to Josh Hinges's um, per council district. Regarding the housing first expansion, um, we should also be working to create more opportunities for low barrier housing in Kansas City. I disagree with my opponent that some people wanna be homeless. Don't people don't, no one wants to be homeless. It is a matter of having the resources and getting through the limited barriers necessary to get the resources that they need. The final thing is that prevention investments in key populations. So we know that groups like um, uh, house, uh, older folks are increasingly experiencing homelessness. So how can we specifically invest in repair programs that allow them to stay in their home in age and place as well as keep them from losing their homes through rapidly increasing tax uh, increases?
What makes you think that there, I wanna do a follow up. What makes you think that there are some people out there that don't wanna be homeless?
So I worked at the Department of Housing and Urban Development, first in the Office of Field Policy and Management, then the Office of Community Planning and Development. This has been researched to death and what they have consistently found is that people who say that they would rather be homeless are saying they would rather be homeless than go through all of the barriers and steps necessary to be able to access conditional housing in some places. If we're serious about housing people, we need to house people without adding on restrictions. We need to make sure that they should be able to get housing as soon as possible and then get the resources they need to stay out of houselessness.
Hmm. Okay. Uh, Ms. Hasley, somebody got in my head with this question right here. So I'm gonna ask you first. Discuss the positives and the shortcomings of the NFL draft weekend in Kansas City this year. What are the lessons that were learned for our participation in the World Cup in twenty twenty-four so that the same issues don't occur?
I think the biggest complaint that I heard um, sort of universally is that there was not this, you know, economic boom that people expected. You know, a number of small businesses um, bought extra inventory, you know, had extra staff on hand. Um, and people didn't, didn't go there to shop. Um, other people thought that the crowds were gonna be too big, you know, and so they stayed away. Um, so I think there could have been some overpromising in the communications plan in terms of what to expect from the draft. Um, if it's typical that people stay in the draft zone, and I think the NFL certainly set it up so that you didn't have to leave. Um, then I think that that should be honestly communicated. Uh, but I think that we have an opportunity to do some more creative things to get people, you know, out of the particular zone. And the World Cup will, I think, go on for uh, more than one day if I'm, or you know, it will go on for multiple days if I'm not mistaken and, and possibly in multiple places. And so, you know, I think that we could do some creative things to move people around the city um, areas that they wanna experience. But I think, you know, just being honest about what to expect and then um, planning for that accordingly. If the community is expecting, you know, an influx of dollars into their small business, then as a city, we should try to make that happen.
Follow up question. Do you think Kansas City is ready for a World Cup?
Uh, not today. Uh, one thing that I think we certainly need to do is get our parks together. We're the city of fountains and there's a lot of fountains that need some attention. They're crumbling. Um, I think we need to put our best face forward, um, which means, you know, investing in our infrastructure, taking care of our parks, for example. Um, and we need to prepare our small businesses, um, if, if we expect for them to to participate and benefit from other people that are in town. But as today, no, we're not ready. We have a lot of work to do.
Mr. Kelly.
So um, the question is um, about the World Cup and whether, what was the biggest complaint? Uh, so um, this is a little bit personal for me, but uh, the biggest complaint I had was with regards to transportation. So um, KCPS ended up canceling classes for, I think, one to two days because all the bus drivers that they um, typically use were needed to be able to transport folks around the city because of the World Cup. And so that created serious issues, not just in terms of access, but also in terms of childcare for all of the parents who needed to scramble to figure out how they're gonna take care of their kids for two days unannounced. And so I think that um, we do need to do more to specifically invest in our transportation, sp- uh, especially as it come, as it relates to transit. Um, because we not only are Um, because we not only are dealing with a dearth of drivers, but we also have a limited number of routes that go east to west to get people from places like downtown, like midtown over to uh G E H A Field at Arrowhead. And so the other part of it is, I think that we are not doing enough to communicate with folks about what specific things are going on. One of the other big challenges that I heard a lot of people mentioned was trying to access things like their mailboxes at Union Station. And because there was no communication about that, people were missing out on vital mail for days. And so we need to have a better communication strategy, coupled with a better transportation strategy, um if we're gonna be serious about showing up for the World Cup.
Mr. Ray.
Uh, you know, I think it was neat to see Kansas City portrayed uh in such a positive light uh on TV and and to the nationally and internationally, but um, you know, I think the news that surely came out after uh the World Cup about who uh was benefited and who was not. You know, if you were inside of the NFL's uh parameters and you were selling roast beef sandwiches and burnt ends, you did pretty well. If you were a small business located adjacent uh and very close to Union Station and anywhere further away, you stocked up and you might have done worse uh than before the World Cup. Uh, and so I think there are some, some good lessons to learn from this. Um, uh, we haven't seen the final numbers, but from what I understand, I think less than twenty percent of the folks who actually attended came from out of town. Um, and as far as it was being portrayed on the news, uh, we were expecting three hundred thousand people to come to Kansas City from elsewhere, and that's not what happened. I think there are some key differences between the draft and the World Cup though. Uh, although the NFL maintained a lot of control, we could expect FIFA to try and maintain a lot of control. Uh, this is an event that's gonna take place over weeks. Uh, it truly is going to bring people from across the world. Uh, you know, we're talking forty to fifty thousand fans from, you know, fill in the blank of whatever European country ends up playing here. Uh, but we have to make sure that we do not let uh this repeat with the draft and that we truly create an environment conducive to small businesses benefiting.
Mr. Allington.
Uh, very simply, we need to actually put citizens first. Uh, besides the uh closeout of the businesses, the major issue that I heard was from people in the West Side. And their issue was that their neighborhoods were turned into a parking lot and there was no concern or regard to anybody down there. Even the parking lot issue, when it was related to me, I told them I didn't think about that out of the gate, that they would be locked into their own community and won't, and wouldn't have an opportunity to participate because of the lockout and also the lock-in factor. The other factor with the World Cup, uh I think we should do a better job with the World Cup, just because of the type of crowd that it brings in. Uh, they don't have a closeout mentality that I've seen so far. Uh, there is a concern. And the concern would be with the amount of trafficking that's related to World Cups in international soccer.
Mr. Short.
Yeah, the main concern I heard was from the business community in Kansas City. I mean, you're talking about areas uh in the crossroads in Columbus Park that prepared for this event. And, you know, as other candidates have identified, the NFL has their talents in us in this type of situation. And I also don't think that that is effective as well. And and and, you know, I went, it was great. I had a lot of fun and and it was, it's designed to keep you in the space. Right? Everything you need is there in in the fence. And my thing is, when something like this happens in Kansas City, why can't we expand the fence? And of course, that's figurative. I mean, I'm I'm actually talking about opening up the city and talking about the areas where people should be going instead of trying to keep them into one space. And I understand that NFL has a revenue capture. I'm I'm not trying to oversimplify it. I'm just saying that as it relates to Kansas City, we had some things that we missed the mark on. Um, and I am gonna agree with candidate Kelly in the terms of transportation. I mean, this is like this, this is a big issue. And when it comes to World Cup in twenty twenty six, the question of are we prepared if it happens tomorrow? No, we're not prepared. We're not even close. And uh, we have to be able to move, and this is not a couple of days. World Cup is a month. Uh, and and we don't know yet know how many games we're gonna get. We don't yet know how many, what the impact is, but people are gonna be here practicing in Lawrence, in Saint Joe, uh in Kansas City, uh all over the region for months. This is not a weekend. This is not a week. So how we, oh, I lost the timer. Uh, oh, one second. Well, okay. That's my answer.
Mr. Curl.
Uh, yes, uh, I believe that the uh NFL draft taught us a lot. And uh we have to pay attention to some of the lessons that we should learn from the NFL draft. And that is, is that we have to uh open it up. And and I know that uh as some people have said that the NFL, you know, keeps it, you know, closely knit, but uh, one of the things that I've heard from a lot of people, especially small businesses, is that they didn't have an opportunity to even participate. And so therefore, when I say open it up, you have to uh make sure that all small businesses have an opportunity to participate in some type of shape, form, or fashion. Uh, whether it's on the West Side, whether it's on the East Side, uh downtown, crossroads, whatever. I just believe that uh they have to have those opportunities. And so therefore, in order to do that, we have to start planning now. The World Cup is in twenty twenty six, I believe, which is about three years away. So there shouldn't be any reason why there shouldn't, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four is next year?
Their question, this, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Their question had the wrong date on it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I maybe I was mistaken, but anyway. Uh, but yeah, I just think that planning is key and we've got to start planning now for it. Uh, I know transportation is gonna be a big issue. I mean, that is something that has to be, a plan has to be developed as sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Yeah, their question had twen- and I was just thinking it out loud. I don't got twenty twenty four. No, it's not. Okay, so here's the next question. Twenty twenty three so far has turned out to be a record-setting year for gun deaths in Kansas City. Not only gun deaths, but shootings in Kansas City. This past weekend, we had seven people get killed, uh a number of people get shot. Uh, last weekend was a violent weekend. So what efforts need to be made to reduce murders and violent crimes in Kansas City? Mr. Kelly, I'm gonna start with you.
Sure. So this is obviously very concerning and um I I definitely express my condolences to the families that have had to deal with this. Um, when it comes to gun violence, I really think that there are three things that we should be looking at. First is funding. The second is um legal recourse is, and the final one is unconventional strategy. So first with regards to funding. Um, the city council has um already allocated thirty million dollars um as part of the uh KC three sixty strategy that is meant to help us um fund organizations that are doing the work. I think we should continue to work to try to find ways to increase that funding so that existing and new organizations have ample opportunities to get involved in helping us stem the violence. The second thing is with regards to legal opportunities. So Kansas City was able to pursue and get a hundred fifty thousand dollar settlement against an independent gun dealer who was selling guns that they knew were being used for violence and crime. I want Kansas City to continue to explore those opportunities to hold bad actors accountable. The final part is with exploring unconventional elements. So one of the trends we've seen with shootings is with road rage shootings and I want to specifically look at what is the kind of intersection of the built environment and shootings and understand what we as a city council can do to build a safer built environment that not only discourages shootings, but also um encourages greater cohesion so that people can build the connections that ultimately stem violence from happening in the first place.
Okay, I want to do a follow-up. Which uh come uh your answer, you said about thirty million dollars and you would give more money to agencies to do what?
So the funding would be given to agencies to um do work that helps to prevent violence from occurring. So this would be existing organizations such as um Casey Mothers in Charge, as well as newer organizations such as Kansas City.
Right there. What is Casey Mothers in Charge doing?
So Casey Mothers in Charge is specifically providing um support to victims of violence and working to um ensure that um families have the resources they need to make it through um the trials and tribulations of losing a loved one to gun violence.
Uh. Mr. Short.
Yeah, I think um, yeah, as as identified, Casey Common Good has put together a wonderful plan called KC three sixty and it's modeled after Omaha C three sixty and um they saw seventy percent reduction in violent crime and um but it's so, so we know all those things. It's six point seven million dollars over over five years. We've talked about it until we're blue to face. Our job as leaders is going to be to hold ourselves accountable and hold uh to start hitting benchmarks uh and to see progress on this crisis because it is a crisis. Um, and we, we need to be working with those folks and the other organizations, because let's be very clear, there are other organizations doing work in the non uh violent, excuse me, violent crime space. But also KC PD in the city also had a presser last week uh talking about things like twenty fourteen's Casey Nova and and how we kind of reintegrate some of those policies and procedures into our violent act, violent crime action plan. It can be done. We as a city just have to hold not only ourselves, other council people and city admin um accountable to making sure that these plans are implemented and that specific measurements of success are uh attainable. Um, and and when they're not adjusting those plans and uh we have a duty to provide, we as elected leaders have a duty to provide safety to our citizens and and we need to do a lot better.
Oh, okay. I got a follow-up for you. Three sixty, you mentioned that. So program that they implemented from another city, did they reduce homicides because they put more money into it? Or did they, how did they wind up reducing more homicides?
So I think that that they're, they had a multi-pronged approach. So I think that the first part of their um approach was social determinants. Why are people going to violent crime? And that is addressing housing, that is addressing food insecurity in the areas that we have food deserts. That's addressing um transportation issues. That is the first piece. The second piece is working with law enforcement, excuse me. Making sure um that we are working with our police department to help reduce uh crime in this, in the city. But Omaha specifically, um so they did reduce violent crime. It saw seventy percent reduction. So there was, there's multiple levels.
Stop sign is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Allington.
You don't make decisions off of other states' weather. I would never look at California and then decide how to address in Kansas City. And I say that to go to understanding crime, crime trends, and also dollars that empower communities. When I started off, I mentioned economic mobility. And I also mentioned officer system engagement. Officer system engagement allows funding for everything that I'm about to read right now. I mentioned Boston. Boston has a B E E program. That program helps young people in low-income backgrounds attain jobs and build careers. So when I talk about workforce stabilization programs and the ability of transitioning people out of poverty into productivity, we already have uh infrastructure that shows that if the city uh supports nonprofits, for-profits, et cetera, that does this, we can increase our services. I also meant New York. New York has the community-based organizations that work to reduce violence and and e- and improve economic opportunities. How do they do that? Again, partnerships, the officer citizen engagement requires the city to write qualifying language. So we would actually be able to uh do identical work that we see in New York. Denver has the O E D. Provides a range of services, residence, employment, education, training opportunities. And again, you can see the same uh uh thread that I'm talking about, uh creating that funding stream to empower communities to actually have uh catch facilities that is germane to the areas, whether that's education, whether that's cameras, whether that's increasing uh community uh activities and or programs. But I believe all of this can be done uh externally and growing governance does not work. And this is why I've not been supportive. Aim for peace, fat hawk, or anybody else that we give money to.
Let me ask you a follow-up question here. Where are you gonna get the money to do this?
I'm actually glad you asked it. So with the officer citizen engagement, it requires DOJ uh funding. Uh, when I was up in DC roughly about a month ago, we partnered with uh the gentleman in Cleaver's office to not only identify funding, but to uh balloon programs that were already working would give you two hard examples, that black veterans organization that I talked about, we're in partnership with uh State Representative Anthony Nigley. Uh, 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 not probation and pro. Uh, DOC, Department of Corrections at the state, to not only identify funding, but double that with the uh federal fund. We also have identified a few STEM programs on the city.
Outside. Ms. Hasley.
Um, I think a lot of what folks said, you know, obviously are good strategies. The um something that I do want to focus on that I'll touch on since it hasn't been mentioned yet, um the age group that is involved in the majority of violent crime are between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four. And that's trending younger. Um, I've talked to some young people and obviously I was young at one point. And uh one thing is still true. Um, people know who the shooters are. If your peer group, like the sixteen and twenty-four age group, uh their peers know who is on the wrong track, who did the shooting last night, who's in conflict with somebody else. Um, so I'd like to pull young people in um and give them something more constructive to do. Um, and there are other places that have really vibrant youth organizations that inform city policy. And so I'd like to recreate something like that in Kansas City that is well-funded, uh led by youth, they inform policy. Um, and as many as uh great ideas that we can come up with, we're all young. I don't think anybody on this Zoom is twenty-four uh or younger. And so I'd like to bring those people in and have them tell us what should we be doing to help uh your peers get on the right track and stay on the right track.
Mr. Curls.
Uh, yes, um, I I I mentioned this uh in my opening remarks in regards to crime reduction that I was gonna be focused on because I believe that, as I mentioned, that uh African-American males are the ones that are greatly impacted by gun violence. Eighty percent of the gun violence has been uh in the African-American community. We are only twenty-seven percent of the population in Kansas City. Do those, do that math. But in in regards to reducing gun deaths and gun violence, number one, you have to do away with the guns, which we know that that's not gonna be possible. So in order to address it, let's do this. Let's look at programs for youth. Let's look at going into schools and talking about after-school programs and and um places for youth to go so that it takes their mind off of possibly going down that path of of violence or or creating gun violence. Let's look at partnering with unions in regards to doing some apprenticeship programs so that they can learn or trade if they're not college-bound. Let's look at how we can address poverty because that's where a lot of violence is. Let's look at creating good jobs for youth so that they can have a a a job that is gonna pay them something instead of having to want to go out there and steal and maybe kill somebody. Let's also bring in all the stakeholders to how we can create uh better opportunities and stop gun violence. Let's look at those individuals that have been mostly impacted and see what their thoughts are.
Stop sign. I want to back up one time and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Ray to uh Ms. Hasley. You said bring the youth to the table and let them be a part of that process. How do you get them to the table?
I think that they have to be put in the driver's seat in terms of recruiting each other. So I don't currently hang out with nineteen, twenty-year-old kids anymore. Um, so I'd start with, you know, five or six that are really um interested and and I know five or six now that are really interested. And then I build out from there um and really, you know, empower them and 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 give them the resources necessary and hopefully have other adults that um are enthusiastic about empowering um kids to to be involved in 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 creating what their future should look like in this city.
All right. Uh, Mr. Ray.
This is an issue that's deeply personal to me. I grew up in a neighborhood that experienced a pretty high level of violence. Um, as a prosecutor, I've I've worked to prosecute those who commit violence against women, against children, and commit drive-by shootings. I've served on the board of Mothers in Charge. I worked in the Nova program, which I'm gonna talk about a little bit. We heard some other candidates mention it. Um. My greatest, one of my concerns is that we've allowed this level of violence to become normalized. I mean, we are on track to surpass our deadliest year in Kansas City history. That would make last year go from our second to our third deadliest year. And we're talking about the last five to six years. The W E because uh DuBois had a Dubois had a really good term that he used called peculiar indifference during reconstruction when uh folks didn't seem all that concerned about addressing Uh, folks didn't seem all that concerned about addressing uh issues uh that were happening in communities of color. And I'm, I'm troubled that we have gotten to this point. And so where do we go from here? Where we do, we do what works. We do what works here in Kansas City. In two thousand and fourteen, we had the Casey Nova program, which was a focused deterrence program. It had important elements that it was evidence-based, it was comprehensive, it was cohesive, and we saw dramatic reductions in violence. We saw thirty percent reduction in homicides to a forty-two-year-low with reductions across the board in other violent crime. I don't think we could re-implement that program in its entirety. However, I think there are important elements that we have to use to complement what is going on right now. Because what we're doing right now and what we have planned is not going to be enough.
I wanna follow up with your own one question because you brought up Casey Nova, but then Casey Nova have some behind-the-scenes issues. With uh the way they were targeting certain individuals.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm actually happy that you asked me that because when I distinguish what worked with Nova and what did not work with Nova. I think that is one thing that we would have to absolutely do different. Um, one, Nova. Collected data on individuals based on officer intelligence. When you add into the equation biased policing, preconceived notions, I think we could all be suspect of how that data is being compiled. And so I think if we were to redo a version of Nova, it would require us to find a different mechanism from gathering that data. That doesn't include targeting folks that don't need to be targeted.
All right, thank you. Uh, I got two last questions here I'm gonna try to go through. And if you wanna just briefly answer this next off-the-record question. Uh, I, I would appreciate you doing so and then we're gonna get to the closing question. But because we're talking about crime and I don't want this to come across like some sort of deep-funding thing. But do you think the Kansas City Missouri Police Department needs to be held more accountable? For what they're doing with the money that they receive? We basically write them a blank check for two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety million dollars. We keep giving them more and more money, but the crime keeps going up and up. Seemed like if you would give them more money, crime would be, you would see the results of crime going down. They get combat money, they get grant money, they get all of this money and it's like they're not held accountable. So do you believe they should be held accountable and what ways would you look to hold them more accountable? Let's start with Mr. Short.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think that they need to be held accountable when it comes to what they're doing, what they're doing with their budget. I think that's a desire of everyone on this call. I think that would be universal. Um. With state-controlled police department, it's awful hard to do that. And because the Board of Police Commissioners makes those decisions. So is it, then you gotta ask yourself, is it a relationship question? Do we need to improve the relationship between the Board of Police Commissioners and, and the council? And then do we need to improve the relationship with rank-and-file officers and the council? I mean, how, what does that look like when we don't have a say in that? Um, so the answer to your question is yes. I absolutely think there should be accountability there. Um, and without local control, I don't know what that looks like. Um, so. I guess that for my view, working with admin at the police department. Uh, as well as supporting our rank-and-file officers is gonna be uh pretty important to making sure that happens. Um, because. Well, that is the largest outpouring of money each fiscal year. And we as the stewards of that money that comes in, need to know where it's going and what the metrics of success for that money are.
Mr. Kelly.
Um, yeah, I, I agree that um we should be holding the Kansas City Police Department more accountable. Uh, I think there was a really good article in the Kansas City Beacon that talked about the fact that. Um, even our own Auditor's Office is unable to audit um the Kansas City Police Department budget, which is obviously very concerning. Um, I, I don't want to just, you know, throw up my hands and, and just say that there's nothing we can do. Um, I agree with, with candidate short that it is difficult, but I do think that we should continue to try to be creative. And the main way that I think we should try to explore that is through the courts. Um, obviously, we don't have the numbers in Jefferson City to restore local control to the police department. But we should be trying to use the courts to try to push um the police department to be more transparent with their budget. So we've already tried um doing this um with things like the budget. And we're currently um trying to overturn the ballot initiative, which raised the uh threshold for funding from twenty to twenty-five percent last November. Um, I think we should continue down that path and that's not um necessarily because I think that um it is um. It is going to be a foolproof option. It's very, it is very possible that things could um break um the other way. But um until we can rest local control back to Kansas City, um I think that's probably gonna be our best course of action.
Mr. Ray.
Yeah, it's um, the accountability piece is tied up in what we are uh legally able to do. Um, and uh, at this point in time, that's difficult. Uh, but that does not keep us from building the relationships that uh we can rely on as a linchpin of. Strong professionalism of strong communication and mutual respect. You know, I fully intend to use the relationships I've developed over the years of being a prosecutor with detectives who've risen through the ranks and, and the brass over there. Uh, to have uh, uh, you know, better, stronger communication, more open and honest communication. I'm going to attend every police board meeting uh and I'm gonna talk about what happens there. I'm gonna testify there if I need to. I'm gonna share ideas there if I need to. Um, but you know, I, I, I think there have certainly been times in our history. Where we have had stronger relationships between the folks at City Hall, folks across the street at uh, at police headquarters. Um, times where we've had stronger communication and, and relationships between council members and folks over there. And so it can be done under the current structure. Uh, I think it takes folks who have experience, who have. Uh, high professional standards and extend professional courtesy and respect. And I think that can go a long ways.
Mr. Curls.
Uh, um, I think that yes, we definitely need more accountability from the police department. Uh, absence of local control, it's gonna be difficult at best, as been mentioned by several other men, uh, people on this call. But uh, I think the other thing that we, we have to do, and that is, is to. Continue to foster relationships with the police department. Uh, and that means that uh there is a large divide that is taking place between the black community and the police department. We've got to figure out a way that we can start minimizing that divide. And that means that we need to start working together, coming together, having, meeting meetings as possible. To listen and to understand what's going on. And so that they could hear the concerns of the black community. Because uh, I, I believe that that starts creating some accountability. Uh, and when it comes to the budget, that's a different story because that's, you know, something that we cannot control due to state control. But I think that there are other aspects of accountability that we have to look at in regards to the police department. And I'm willing to work with the community, work with the police department in regards to trying to resolve those other accountability issues. And questions that uh have been plaguing our community for some time now.
Ms. Hasley.
You know, um, I've said before, you know, I've been campaigning all over the city as many people on this Zoom call have. Um, and the accountability question as it relates to the police department is pretty universal. I think um there's a lot of disappointment in terms of the follow-up and follow-through uh by some of our officers. Um, there's a couple of reasons that people cite. And when I say this is pretty universal, I mean, doesn't matter where I am, it comes up in its, in its complaints. Um, you know, from, from police not um responding, you know, or arresting people. When clearly, you know, somebody has broken into your house and neighbors know exactly who did it. And then that person doesn't get arrested and that kid winds up getting shot by somebody else because they tried to rob another person. Um, or, you know, um, just, you know, the accountability. So I think that that, um, I think that that attitude is increasing. And honestly, I don't know that even local control can deal with it. Although I fully support lo- local control and I think we should get there and find a way there. But um, it's just like a company to me. You know, when the staff in the company, you know, there's problems amongst the staff. You really have to look to the leadership, you know, to deal with that. Um, and the police department is a very insular place. So um, I think we have a lot of work to do in terms of people being satisfied with the police service that they, some say are not getting.
All right, thank you. This is the last question. And the last question is, what question do you think I should have asked that I didn't? And how would you have answered it? Chris from right.
And I know you were gonna come to me first on that one. Let me ask you this before I start. Uh, are, are we getting a closing or is this basically our last opportunity to say anything?
Uh, based upon the time, I'm gonna say this is your closing and your question you wish I had asked.
If that's the case, then I'll give everybody two minutes for this.
Okay, okay. So that sounds good. And she's the boss.
I'm the boss.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, you know, I, I, I would have liked a little more uh focus and, and, and drilling down on, on the public safety issue. And we got there a little bit with some of the, the previous questions. Of where we are and what we're going to do, you know, looking at what we did with Casey Nova. Um, I already said what the stats were and, and what worked with the program and what didn't work. Um, you know, we are, are taking an approach now that includes several different types of interventions. You've heard about KC three sixty, you've heard about um what the police department is now uh discussing. And I went to a PowerPoint presentation that the chief gave uh with some details there. Um, you know, none of these approaches are in a panacea. Uh, no one approach is going to work. And so we have to find a way to meld some of these things together. You know, Omaha three sixty, I'm sorry, KC three sixty is currently in a pilot phase. Uh, and it took a long time, many years to show some results. We don't have the convenience of time with the level of bloodshed we've had on our streets this last year and the previous years. We've gotta get that program scaled up. Uh, it, it, it's, in my opinion, serves the softer function that we used in, in. Uh, KC Nova, it was kind of a carrot and stick approach. And so this was the carrot part of that program. But I, I do believe you have to have an enforcement piece that includes limited uh and uh, uh, very specific use of law enforcement. Um, and that's one thing that I wanna find a, a way to do and, and create an actual strategy, a public safety strategy. Because right now we have an approach that we're throwing money at to any organization that's gonna apply, apply through an RFP process. And that's just never really worked for us and any other problems we try to address. I wanna thank you all this evening. Uh, my name is Chris Mrae, running for fourth district at large. I'm proud to be endorsed by uh Missouri Pro Choice. I'm proud to have a long history of uh working with the Greater Kansas City Women's Pol- Political Caucus and supporting women in office and beyond. Uh, and I'm gonna work hard to make sure Kansas City is a safe and clean city for women in this, in this town. Thank you.
Mr. Curls. What question did you want me to ask? And if I asked it, how would you have answered it and your closing statement?
Uh, I, I think that uh probably would have been looking for a question in regards to uh economic development. Or something in that regards to, to kinda talk about um, what are some of the, the things that are gonna help our city grow? And to help grow our tax base because we, we talk about wanting to do things and wanting to. Uh, uh, do things in regards to programs, do things in regards to basic services. Do things in regards to preventing crime, do things in regards to uh just a whole plethora of things. But those things take money. And in order for us to be able to do anything, I think that we have to grow our economic tax base. And so therefore that would increase uh revenue in order for us to be able to do a lot of things. So economic development was something that I thought we should have probably touched upon or asked about a little bit more. Uh, I'm gonna close by saying thank you for the Greater League of Women Voters for this opportunity again to come before you. Uh, I look forward to serving on the city council. Uh, I look forward to. Uh, allocating money for things that I believe that I, our city needs. Like I said, basic services, infrastructure, uh, things of that nature. Uh, I'm proudly supported by all of labor just about except for one labor organization. I've got all the support of all the other political organizations. Uh, and I look forward to serving Kansas City in my role as a city councilman from the fifth district at large. Thank you. Remember to vote June twentieth for Darryl Curls, fifth district at large. Thank you.
Ms. Hasley.
Um, I think you should have asked about collaboration. Uh, all of us have a lot of ideas. Um, but probably the single most effective thing that we can do to move any of these ideas forward is to work together. And so um, that's, you know, what I plan to do if elected on June twentieth. Um, is really try to be um a person that people can trust, you know, say what I mean and mean what I say. Uh, not afraid of confrontation and disagreements. Um, also, you know, learning to um come toward people and their ideas. While also asking them to come toward me, understanding that we have a finite amount of resources. And nobody will get a hundred percent of what they want. Uh, so I'm looking forward to that part of the job. You know, working with people and, and getting the hard things done. Instead of um saying no all the time, I look, I wanna look for opportunities to say yes. Uh, so that's gonna be my approach as an elected official if I'm so fortunate. Um, in closing, you know, um, I hope that, you know, you that are listening. And also people on Zoom have a vote too. So I hope everybody will consider voting for me on June twentieth. Um, I really feel prepared for this job. Um, I'm excited about it. We have a lot of challenges in Kansas City. But I'm super optimistic. Um, and I'm looking forward to serving, you know, if, if I'm lucky enough to be elected. Uh, on election day. So thank you to the League of Women Voters and all the other cosponsors. As well as you, Eric. Thank you for moderating. Appreciate it.
Right. Mr. Kelly, what question you were dying to answer that I didn't ask?
I think one area that I would have liked the opportunity to explore a bit further would have been with LGBTQ rights. Um, I, I think it's no secret that um people who live in Kansas City, who are uh members of that community, have been feeling. Um, feeling like they are in pain, feeling like they are under attack. And it is incumbent upon the existing and the incoming council to make clear that they will be champions for those issues. Whether it be um opposing book bans that exclude certain voices, whether it be opposing Attorney General Bailey's um uh. Exhausting overreach um with emergency orders for trans care. We have to be a city council that works for people and it works to make sure that the most vulnerable among us consistently have the resources. That they need to be able to achieve and maintain a good quality of life. Um, I'm the only candidate in my race who has taken a true stance on the issues affecting the LGBTQ community. And I'll continue to do that if I'm fortunate enough to be elected. Um, in closing, I just wanna say thank you again to the League of Women Voters for inviting us to participate tonight. The reason why you should vote for me is because I'm the only candidate in my race with experience moving legislation through the city council. That includes major policies like the city's complete streets ordinance. That includes major plans like the city's climate protection and resiliency plan. And that includes major projects like the city's reconnecting communities pilot from the federal government, which brought over a million dollars to the West Side alone. Um, if we are serious about creating a new Kansas City, a Kansas City that we want while keeping the Kansas City that we deserve. Then we have to elect new leadership and fresh perspectives. That is what I will bring to the seat. That is the reason why I am running. And if you believe that these are the issues, if you believe that this is our opportunity. And if you believe that it is time for Kansas City to finally get the leadership that it needs and deserves, my name is Michael Kelly. I'm running in the fifth district at large and I ask for your vote on Tuesday, June twentieth.
Mr. Short, close us out.
Uh, I think it's important to ask um if Kansas City is gonna be your full-time focus or is it gonna be your part-time focus? We have too many problems. We have too many opportunities. We have too many, we have too much work to be done for Kansas City City Council to be treated as a part-time position. That's why I pledged from day one to be a full-time leader. It is time to bring the twenty-sixth floor of City Hall down into the neighborhoods, down onto the sidewalks. Um, and, and actually have a voice for the neighborhoods, but also educate people, people, it is our job to. People, it is our job to educate people about the processes at City Hall. And we have not done a good enough job of that. And so that's why I think that um I would have liked to have heard about a full time commitment and also serving a full term. I think that's a fair question, you know? Is this a stair step for you? Do you have um aspirations outside of Kansas City or another office in Kansas City? Um, it's important to know that the people that are running for city council are fully committed to the city council of Kansas City for four, potentially eight years. And I think that that is really important. So that's, that's would be my answer is that I'm fully committed. I don't have aspirations outside of Kansas City. Kansas City will be my full time focus. Um, I've actually already placed myself on notice with my current employer um in the event that we are successful. So uh we we've been able to work that out and and Kansas City will be my full time job. In closing, I wanna thank uh the League of Women Voters uh for all the work that they do, not only with voter registration, but voter outreach as well. I think it's very important. Uh, Mr. Weston, it's it's great to see you at yet another uh candidate forum. And and thanks for always uh pushing a little bit and and asking for clarification, quite frankly, cuz we use terms that people don't necessarily understand that might be on the call. So it's good that you're always asking those questions. So um I believe in the future of Kansas City and I believe in full time leadership. So I would encourage you on June the twentieth to stand tall and vote short. Thank you, everybody. Uh, it's been a real treat.
And I wanna say I thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank the candidates. You all did a fabulous job. Give yourself an applause. God did a great answering the questions, uh staying in the timeframe and also AKA Sorority Incorporated. Thank you so much for teaming up with the League of Women Voters and inviting me back again. This is two times. Yay, I must be doing something right. So I'll turn this back over to Elizabeth, who will close you out, or Miss Steel, who will close you out.
Thank you. Thank you, audience, for your thought provoking questions and your interest in the June twentieth Kansas City municipal election. And we also wanna thank our guest moderator, Eric Weston. You did a great job. Uh, a recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, L W V K C dot org. And it's also linked to your four one one page. Uh, if candidates go in to vote four one one, they will be able to see this forum also. Please take a minute to share our candidate forums via your Facebook page next door or others' favorite social media channels. And remember, for complete voting and candidate information, visit L W C V, L W V K C dot org and vote four one one dot org. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Uh, good night.
Thank you. Good night.